I'd like to call our meeting to order. Ms. Steele, if you please, call the roll.
Okay, see, Mr. Gibson's not here. Dr. Orth?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. Mr. Gibson did call and apologize for not being able to make it tonight to our meeting, okay? At this time, we're gonna have our invocation by Pastor Melvin Epps of Church of the Living Word, after which will be led by our pledge allegiance by Mr. Steven Kresovic, Senior Patrol Leader, Troop Number, Boy Scout Troop Number 111.
Good evening to each and every one. But, boy, I would like to ask you to come in. I have a short statement to make before I pray. And I just wanna say, sitting there, I really enjoy sitting there, seeing everyone coming in and how they was being kind and act of kindness to one another. And I just wanna say, allow that same spirit be in this meeting on tonight. That this will be one of the best meetings ever. So I really enjoy being in your presence, okay? Yeah, let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we come tonight thanking for who you are and what you're doing even now in our midst, oh God. Heavenly Father, we come to seek your face for guide in the direction, God, knowing that everything, God, that we have desire for this meeting is in your hand, God. Nothing is too hard for you. Father, the atmosphere that have already been set for this meeting, oh God. Father, I pray now for the Board of Supervisors, God, as they come together with the citizen of Gloucester County, God, hearing the agenda on tonight. God, it will be a gender of peace and oneness, God, and, and, um, working together, God, and hearing one another. So, God, we thank you for this opportunity that Gloucester County will be better, God, because of this board coming together and hearing the concerns and care of the people of Gloucester County. So, Father, we thank you and we praise you even now for what you're gonna do in this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen.
Hello, everybody. All right, if you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Pastor Epps. Okay. Moving on, we'll have the approval of the minutes from our April the fifteenth and April twenty-first meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Uh...
Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, matters presented by the board.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, actually, this is for Ms. Steele. Now that the high school is completely finished, would it be possible for the school superintendent to arrange for another re-overview for the, either the whole board or two-on-one? I know this is kind of a busy time for them, but, you know, we've had these reviews periodically now that it's completely finished. It would be really nice to really see the final package. There was a nice article in the Gazette Journal about it, and, you know, a lot of us have had questions about, and also about, the financial portion of it. So if that's okay, and again, anytime that's convenient for them, either later so that it doesn't interfere with, I know, the push to get it completely ready for the kids. Would that be possible? And whether, I don't know, we wanna do a whole group to minimize the impact on it? If we do, then we'd have to obviously have that announced, but it would be great to really see the final product. It sounds pretty neat.
Right, and I don't think you'd wanna wait to your joint meeting, 'cause that's probably too far, that's October.
Right, right, no, I wanna do it before school.
I think so.
'Cause I think, once school starts, it's gonna be probably pretty crazy with all the new stuff, so, you know, whenever they can, just let us know.
Okay.
I'm sure some of the other members would like to do that, but I know in the past, we've had a late-in-the-day when, you know, things have settled down, but whatever's convenient for them would be fine with us.
Maybe it could be the night of the joint meeting with the planning commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Glad to do that, thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
So, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but traveling from Seventeen, from the point all the way over here to this wonderful location, we've got antelopes, giraffes, antelopes and zebras growing in the median, and I was just wondering when, when VDOT's gonna come and take care of this mess that they've, we've got, and so if you could call, call them, Ms. Steele.
You didn't see the tigers?
I actually, I actually spoke with Mr. McKnight. They have been given notice to proceed, and they'll be starting at Gloucester Point. He said no later than Monday of next week. Of course, that could change with the, with the weather that we're seeing, but I asked last night, 'cause I've seen enough issues as well, so I just reached out to Lee to, to ask, and he said, notice to proceed was given, they'll be starting first of the week.
So you may call off the safari?
Yes.
Okay.
I got my guns ready. Hey, while they're doing that, couldn't they do something about the weeds and everything? It just, you know, it is nasty to come across river in that meeting, all these weeds and everything, and I know we can't put anything like structure like plants or whatever because of the safety issue, but it would be nice if they could just clean up the median a little bit.
You're talking about the concrete?
The concrete, yeah, yeah, just, thank you.
Okay, any other matters presented by the board? Ms. Nikosia?
I believe Ms. Steele's gonna hit on this, but, um, being in the, representing the courthouse, I got a lot of phone calls, emails, and conversations yesterday about the flagpole and flower beds. Ms. Steele, I wanna say what I said yesterday to the people who called me. Ms. Steele is working on it, and so, um, it is be, it's an issue being taken care of. What I, I think what I would like to see is if it's, it, from, from hence on maybe to think about, if it's something that we don't take care of, kinda putting it out there for the community so they know it's not a, it's not us, the county, it's whoever put it there, and it's their responsibility to take care of it. And in this case, um, it, Main Street Preservation and their people, and they're working on getting it straight, but I think in the future, we need to be able to, be able to say to the constituents, yes, this is a county problem, or no, this is somebody else's problem, and whoever that somebody may be.
Thank you, Ms. Nikosia. Any other? Okay, county administrator items.
Yes, just a couple. I'm, I'm sure the, the bees are buzzing with the news about the Coleman Bridge and the toll, but in case somebody hasn't heard yet, uh, the toll will be coming off on Friday night, so we'll see different kinds of construction going back and forth between the lanes, so everybody, please be careful, but after Friday night, the tolls will, will be off. Also, wanted to announce that the annual Comics Con will be at Gloucester Main Library from Saturday, uh, on, on Saturday from ten to two, and that's a, one of their largest events, if not the largest, that they run each year. So that's it, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Steele. Okay, no scheduled presentations, public comment period. Please come before the board, and please hold your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you. Mr. Mowery.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the board. Ms. Steele, Mr. Wilmot's absent. Howard Mowery, York District.
Take as long as you want, it's your time.
Just say right here and catch you one.
Will Mr. Bizani's comments from the last meeting be applied from here on out? Five minutes per speaker. There can be some valid exceptions on occasions. I received info today, the toll is gone on Friday this week, but this is now a profoundly serious safety problem. I heard that the outside two easy-pass lanes will be closed, and all traffic will be shifted to the right. All law enforcement and rescue need to be put on alert, because the less intelligent will be increasing their speed, and the far right will be goosing to get into the left lane after moving forward. The speed limit needs to stay the same for the safety of all the drivers. A look at your current building codes for multi-story buildings needs immediate review of two stories and above. Have any of you visited friends in Riverbend Housing? This is a prime subdivision for this code change. I would suggest you visit a friend on the first or second floor. You will find there is no insulation from the first-floor ceiling through the second-floor ceilings. You can hear the animals, the children, the adults, vacuum cleaners, et cetera, being run across the above floors. Changing the codes is necessary regardless of the cost associated with construction. The question would be, do you live in a dwelling where other people run over your head daily? Nuff said. As brought to the table last meeting, you knew, now realize, after many years of deliberation, that revenue by quantity only comes from housing, not dirt and weeds. Bringing this up again is necessary, as you are starting to see an increase in requests for more housing development in the Point area. You have been severely negligent in requesting road widening to four lanes on various roads in the county, as development will now increase with no tolls. The first two roads, Tide Mill Road from Seventeen to Guinea Road, and Guinea Road at Seventeen to Tide Mill Road, with a traffic light on Guinea and Tide Mill. Having the Tide Mill Bridge increased to four lanes, this is where I start. I recommend a study group be established to provide you with a list of VDOT changes more than the six-year plan. The Utilities Department is looking for approval of three million for infrastructure repairs. The question is, will these funds totally pay for those items you have earmarked for these funds? My last item is the administration's insatiable appetite for tourism and parks in rec, an appetite for bringing industry or high-tech companies that appears to be lacking. The only businesses we see are fast food or service companies. These businesses only provide average pay at the lower end of the salary scales. Companies that can provide excellent internships for our high school graduates to be non-existent. Funding by grant, our tax dollars, known in the past as earmarks, also has local funding participation in some way. What is not known is who maintains the maintenance on these upgrades on the primary and local roads, including Main Street. Additionally, the walls around the court circle can be fixed with a VDOT metal rail installed around the circle and painted the same color as the buildings or wall. If crashing through the barrier, a mandatory one-year in jail, no bail. Posted, this will be a revelation. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Judge.
I'll be briefer and, um, less eloquent than the previous speaker. Thank you, board, and Ms. Steele. I'm Susan Nottingham, and I'm here to describe or paint a picture of the Piney Point neighborhood, which is your first agenda item, um, the golf cart, proposed golf cart ordinance put forth by, I believe, Joseph Lemming. I just wanna paint a picture of our community. We are one mile off, one ninety-eight, on the way to absolutely nothing and nowhere. We're surrounded by water on three sides, the Piankatank River, Dancers Creek, and Ferry Creek. I walk my dog through the neighborhood twice a day, every day, and can tell you that, on most days, I don't see a soul in a car or in their yard. It's just a really quiet neighborhood, filled largely with senior citizens, many of whom have had, well, they're cancer survivors, they've had orthopedic surgery, they've had knee replacements, hip replacements. I myself am recovering from some pretty major foot surgery that had me, um, ambulatorily challenged, so this golf cart ordinance would be a real boon for our quiet little community. And we would very much like to join the ranks of the other. I believe there are four in the county already. It's a great way to get around, to visit with neighbors, to go to our weekly socials that we have on our community property, and, um, I, I don't anticipate it being a problem at all. In fact, what is a problem are all the golf cart owners who are already sort of creeping around quietly and without the consent of the county. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Jones. I'm from the Ware District, and this is an unusual agenda, 'cause you've got public comment before anybody speaks about any of the agenda. Okay, so I don't know what they're gonna say, but, um, land-water conservation fund grant for Gloucester Point Beach Bathroom Pavilion Replacement. Yes, that needs to be upgraded. If you've gotta use the ladies' room on the beach, it's better to do it in a facility than on the beach or in the water. This tourism initiative reminds me of a conversation I had with God one morning, and I said, "Father, what would you like me to do today?" And he says, "You mean after we've had a discussion and you've read the Word and worshiped for a while?" I said, "Oh, yeah, that's exactly what I meant." So tourism, et cetera, et cetera, uh, would be after the water company is completely funded, staffed adequately, and replaced and fixed, and no longer a problem in Gloucester. After the policemen and the firemen are adequately paid for their, for their work. I would say that would be after. If you want people to tour here, um, and they have an emergency, and the police are not there to help you, they don't, they don't run up and down the streets very much anymore. You don't really care about touring a county like that. So, that's all I have to say. I'm interested in what the prepositions are and the dangling participles are for these agendas that you have below the public comment.
Catherine Carter, Avondale District. The freedoms of speech and of the press are among the great bulwarks of liberty and can never be restrained except by the spottet governments. When you put a time limit up here, the Virginia Supreme Court put a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar value on just one infraction of freedom of speech. That was with a schoolteacher that had refused to use preferred pronouns, and as a result of his reward in that case, infamous Loudoun County that arrested a parent for reporting the rape of his child at a school board meeting, that got arrested, and then Merrick Garland said, "Arrest all parents to speak against CRT policy." That school system rescinded its DEI policy, which is a restraint of freedom of speech. When people are yelled at to be intimidated so they wouldn't speak again, their subject matter is restrained, or they have a time limit of what they can say, that is a restraint, and that would be like three counts. He was also awarded two counts for religious violations of religious freedom. I just want you to really think about that, um, because it's not adequate time for people to present a formal notice of complaint in which you're, you are to respond, not sit there like, oh, well, you know, a border over the dam. You're supposed to redress grievances according to the Constitution. When you act outside of this document, you are not actually, you've voided your body. It's not a governing body of the people. So, but I do want to thank you so much for the things you have done. You've taken, you have failed to, or not failed to, but decided not to redo that contract with surveillance and keeping tabs of our text messages. You have decided not to go with the database, which usurps a humongous amount of water, especially precious well water that people depend on for their lives. I thank you so much for that, and that, I'm sure that was a pretty expensive process, uh, prospect to do. So thank you so much, but really, freedom of speech unrestrained in every manner is the right of the people who have sovereign political powers, they defend, form, government. So thank you very much.
Okay, any other public comments? Ms. Cronin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had one submitted comment from Kenny Hogg Senior in Gloucester Point. Tonight, I'm encouraging this board, administration, and the Utilities Department to do the morally right thing by not charging the residents of Colony Circle at Gloucester for water for a period of at least three years. Blatant mismanagement of our water system has caused the Colony Circle residents significant financial losses, which include water heater replacements and higher-than-normal monthly water bills from repeatedly having to flush the lines and water heaters in their homes. On top of that, the residents were billed for every nasty drop of water for several years. Legally, it appears you can just ignore what has been done to the Colony Circle residents, but morally, you have no excuse for not compensating those customers for damage and losses due to outright and blatant mismanagement of our public water system. The question is, will you do the morally right thing or just thumb your noses at the customers each one of you have contributed to harming? The cost of the waterline replacement in Tillage Heights is projected to be about half a million dollars. The three million dollar borrowing being considered tonight only covers half of the projected Tillage Heights replacement costs. Are you intending to borrow money again next year to fund the other half of the project cost? Where will the project design money come from? Per the CIP, the design work was supposed to be funded and completed in FY twenty-five, yet when I recently questioned copies, recently requested copies of the design drawings, I was told there are no design drawings. The big question is, will the replacement project even take place, or will the borrowed money be expended to make emergency system repairs or to cover other costs associated with our unmaintained and degrading public water system? If as much effort was expended to maintain and enhance our public water and sewer systems as is expended on parks, recreation, tourism, and other such non-infrastructure social endeavors, Gloucester could have one of the best utilities departments in the state and country. During your last meeting, Mr. Bizani suggested allowing public comment on any topic during all Board of Supervisors meetings. Mr. Crisco was very quick to deflect further discussion on Mr. Bizani's request until after January one, twenty twenty-six. Will we, the people, want you to change your current policy ASAP? The question is, does this board have the intestinal fortitude to hear the people's voice, or will you continue to cower behind a policy that limits the people's voices? Those are all the submitted comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cronin. Okay, moving on, there are no public hearings scheduled for tonight. We move on to our regular agenda. First up, we have a request for golf cart use in Piney Point Subdivision. Mr. Ryan Lewis, Director of Engineering Services.
Good evening, members of the board. As you may recall, the last meeting on July fifteenth, um, you agreed to move forward for further consideration, this matter regarding golf carts in the Piney Point neighborhood. I think the resident could, could, I couldn't have said it as well as you, you did. Having driven down there myself, and I don't even know if you heard this last time, but it's a beautiful neighborhood. Thinking about retiring there myself, so. So anyhow, the city attorney has prepared a draft ordinance for consideration, and a public notice has been provided.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to make the motion to approve the ordinance.
Move second, they're all in favor. Go call.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next, resolution to proceed with applying for land-water conservation fund grant for Gloucester Point Beach Bathrooms Pavilion Replacement. Mr. Matt Bogger.
All right, thank you guys for having me. I hope everyone's doing well tonight. You all had a chance to read your board packets. This is basically the potential grant application for the land-water conservation fund grant that's coming out, um, and basically what we wanna do with this project is to redo and kinda restructure our current restroom and the pavilion down there at Gloucester Point Beach. As everyone hopefully knows by now, we were recently awarded a two-point-four million dollar grant from DCR that helps us create a living shoreline, breakwaters, and allow us for sand replenishment there. Let's make a great improvement to the beach and really build the momentum for this project. And to be honest with you, if that money didn't get approved and we didn't get that grant, I don't think I would be here tonight doing this one, because it wouldn't have been the right timing, it wouldn't have been able to build off of that current thing. We wouldn't wanna build a building that basically isn't protected by all the breakwaters and stuff there. As far as the funding for this particular grant, it's a fifty-fifty match grant, and it's just under one-point-five million is what we're projecting, and then about seven-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand will be coming from the county as far as a match, and the other portion, of course, will come from, from the grant. Looking at the timeline for this particular project, they're looking at giving us notifications sometime in October to see if we're awarded. From there, they'll take it to National Park Service, and then they'll bring it back to us to give us an official notification. So, we wouldn't know if we officially got this grant until sometime in spring twenty twenty-six, and with that timing and everything, it fits perfectly with what we put in the CIP for FY twenty-seven and FY twenty-eight, which the board kinda looked at over the last couple of years. In addition to this bathroom, there's gonna, everybody knows probably there's a need for extra parking and everything else down there, so, um, we're gonna add, we have the potential to add some paving funds or ADA improvement funds to support the existing infrastructure around the building that we build. And I think it's also important to mention that if we don't get this grant, then no county money would be spent, and even if we are awarded the grant and something happens in the meantime, we're able to kind of just sit back and say, hey, we're not, we're not gonna appropriate or accept this money from the grant award. Just to give a little history on the property, the county kind of took over this beach part in that area in eighteen ninety-seven, and since then, the county sort of owned it over the years and really became a park in the mid eight, uh, nineteen eighties, and it really hasn't received so much attention in the meantime. It's kind of been an underutilized gem for a while now, and we hear all the time from citizens in Gloucester Point like, hey, we really wanna improve some stuff down here, and we look, is this kind of an opportunity to really invest in Gloucester Point area? The restroom building itself was inherited sometime in the sixties or seventies. It's about sixty years old, and it was originally an oil storage facility. We've made several modifications to it over the years to make it more of a usable structure for us, but ultimately, that's just not how the building was designed, and it doesn't meet the needs of the beach that sees about a hundred and fifty thousand guests each year, and it's really the only accessible beach in Gloucester County. It currently has major roof damage, bathroom problems, and the showers and the platform all around it are really deteriorating. Again, it's well past its shelf life, and it's just not in the ideal location since it routinely floods. Again, this application is due on August twenty-eighth, and if we are awarded, we would have like a, a three-year timeline to kinda close everything out, so that's how we would span the funding out over several fiscal years. And in And we also, in addition, have architects who are willing to do some work for us right now to help the layout in the park, which really even kind of means that this timing is right for us and why we're looking at that. We're going to get all this stuff finalized with architects and everything by the end of the month, and of course, go through our grant process with the county attorney that we all have to follow, and then hopefully go from there. Are there any questions or thoughts on this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bizani.
So, you know, there are a lot of potholes down there where the boat landing is. Is this grant going to fix the potholes and repave the entire area?
Well, so, well, I'll say, the potholes you're probably referring to is not necessarily our property, it's the DCR property that's on the other side. So, there's two boat landings down there, the one that's more under the bridge isn't county property. That was in their capital budget to be redone, that whole parking lot this year. What we heard was the state pushed that back another year, but we haven't got word on any update there. But the county-owned portion of the parking and all that that we do own, this would address some of that and expand the parking lot, add a few more parking spots, and really cover up what we do. But again, it's because it's multiple players in this area, it wouldn't probably take care of everyone, the one you're referring to.
So, this building is the, the, used to sell hamburgers and hot dogs as well. Is that the same building?
Yes, yes, we used to do that.
Hot dog stands, I used to call it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what we used to do, and just so everybody kind of knows, it became burden over the years, kind of doing all that, it did create revenue for us, but if we're able to get this grant, we're looking to, in addition to redoing the parking, they're adding a few spots so that we can basically create a situation where food trucks can come pull in, and we can kind of rent out those spots, and they can manage that down there instead of us having to manage a concession stand and all that.
So, there won't be like a kitchen in there where they can?
Nope.
No one will occupy and sell hot dogs and hamburgers and whatever?
No, no.
It's just a bathroom renovation?
It's strictly going to be a bathroom and then some storage, whether it's, we can put a, some beach equipment out there or just internal storage for things that don't necessarily sit outside, but pretty much a bathroom and storage. And we're also adding a pavilion on the back because it's a rentable shelter for a lot of families will rent it for reunions and things like that. And we're combining those two structures into one building, so that's the goal of the project.
So, the old building, we would demolish then?
It would be demolished, and this would be, this new one would be raised up, you know, about seven feet, six feet or seven feet to, you know, help with the flooding that always occurs there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Barber?
Questions?
Yes, sir.
So, our match is $715,000. If we were to be awarded the 1.4 number you mentioned. And I know we've had this listed in CIP, and stuff often doesn't get funded in the CIP. My concern is, as lean and as tight as our budgets run, I just want to know where that $715,000 is going to come from, because that's over a penny for one year, and if you spread it out over three years, it's a half a penny. It's money that we just don't have sitting around to do this, and that's, that's my concern is, we get everybody's hopes up, we're going to apply for this thing, and we get it, but at the end of the day, we don't have the money to fund our match. And I, that's, that's my biggest heartburn is, we don't have the money sitting here available to us, and I would like to, you know, I don't know when this became available. I know it's listed, I didn't read that part of it, but these are type things that I'd like to see come to us prior to, two weeks to having to have it submitted. Maybe we save some staff time if we have the ability to look at these things before we have to approve it to meet a deadline.
Okay, and again, you know, next year's CIP, of course, will come to y'all again. That is where the plan funding would come from. And a part of that, too, is we have a couple of different sources. It might be the project for that, but we generally, as a part of the CIP, do approve some ADA or some paving improvements, and we could look at doing some of that as a part of this to help with match if it comes to that. But again, that's y'all's decision in next year's budget time, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Barber?
Just as a comment, so, I understand Mr. Crisco's concern. I think that the opportunity here is a good one, we should, I think, you know, it's an opportunity to apply, but then we also have the opportunity to reexamine it if we get it. I think it's, that bathroom down there is horrendous. I've gone there a few times, and it's an embarrassment to the community for people to use that type of bathroom. You know, I would like to see that changed, but I know that Ms. Crisco, Crisco's comments ring true among many of us, and, but I'd like to at least see us put the application in and see where this goes to see, it may not get funded, but if it does, then we have the hard choices to make about what happens with it.
That, that's, that's my issue is, we get this, but then all of a sudden, we have a more pressing need somewhere else in the county, and this still doesn't happen, because we have, we have other issues that need to be addressed before we can handle some of these other things, and some of these are bigger ticket items, and I'm all, I'm all, this would be a great opportunity. It'd be great if we could get a grant like we got for the shoreline restoration where there is no match, but this match is concerning to me because I don't think we can afford a $715,000 match for this project. Because if we could have afforded that, I think we would have fixed the bathroom 10 years ago, if we could have afforded that.
Why is it a 50-50 match? I mean, in the past, matches have never been as high.
Every, every grant's a little bit different. Like Mr. Crisco said, the recent one we did was a 95, 5% match. Those are obviously much more ideal, but this particular grant is just, that's the way it's structured, it's a, it's a 50-50 match.
Can you, can you mind for another, another?
Not that I know, I mean, we're always looking for every opportunity we could possibly do for grants. I mean, if something comes up between now and then, it's another funding source, we would be open to that, but just not any that I know of right now.
If I can, real quick, real quick. Because last time, we, we negated the bridge to, Bridge Under the Bridge project, and that needed $600,000 to do, and so we don't have the money to do that either. So, I'm kind of concerned as with Mr. Crisco, is that, you know, the money is going to be hard here going forward.
I completely understand. I do, you know, again, since this is existing infrastructure that we own and we kind of need to maintain, I do think this is a little bit different than that, but I completely understand your point, so.
If I could make a comment just real quick about the, the matching grant? This is a federal grant that doesn't allow you to match with other federal grants. Land and Water Conservation Fund has been around since before Ronald Reagan, I can't remember how much before that, but it requires the 50-50 because they don't have enough money to do all they want to do, so they try to get people to put skin in the game. So, if we found a private grant, it could possibly match, but, or a state, but we're not aware of anything at this point.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're always creative funding, we're always looking, keep our eyes open for whatever's out there.
So, when was the last time we did maintenance on this building, and what did we do?
So, as far as significant maintenance, I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, we're constantly in there cleaning it, doing basic maintenance to it. I know facilities, pretty much every year, has to put a couple thousand dollars into the roof because it's basically leaking, if you were to see. I think that's been the major issue right this second, other than just basic maintaining it. Probably, I don't know, do you know the last time it majorly flooded where we had to do a major?
I can't remember the year, I think it was one of the Norristers.
Before my time.
The decking in the middle of the area had been flooded so bad, and so the decking had to be replaced outside of the bathrooms.
Is service called the water and sewer?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, it is an embarrassment, I mean, so many people do use it, especially in the summer. And then again, because our facilities are rented out down there, and then 4th of July, I mean, the place is packed. I know we're fast approaching the 250th anniversary, and although this is probably something that even if we got it and had the money, it probably wouldn't be done in time, but I said, I understand all the concerns both by Mr. Crisco and Mr. Bizani. I would like just put the grant in and just see what happens, and I know we have these pressing needs, I'm always, you know, we're always concerned about the things, and I know we've been criticized about utilities and making sure that gets funded and all that. I mean, we're trying to make inroads with that in terms of helping utilities and helping support the personnel. I guess part of me says, let's, let's try and see what happens, and then if we don't get it, we don't get it, if we get it, we can make those tough decisions. And you said, if we got it, we have three years, right?
If we officially get the grant, yeah, we can, we have three years to complete the project and close it out, so.
Three years to complete or three years to make a decision?
No, the decision, we would have to know right away. We would basically, do we want to accept this funding or appropriate it or not? But if we were to take it, only have three years to complete the project from there.
So, my wife and I were, I was telling her about this this, this morning, we were outside, and, you know, if, if we can, if VIMS would just give up the eyesore they've got on the other side of the bridge, really, you can develop something as nice as Yorktown at the point. You know, you'd have development, you'd get a developer to go in and put restaurants and other things and shops.
Which I swear you're talking about.
You're talking about all the, all the, whatever those.
Boat basin.
The boat basin?
The boat basin. And they do have funding to improve that.
They are working on a plan to upgrade that whole facility, so.
Right, they, they did receive state funding, they're bringing in their 100-foot or 93-foot Virginian is going to be docked there.
And they tore down the old facility that was there when they built the new aquaculture facility.
One of those circular things, those white circular things on the beach, it looks like a nesting place for oysters or something like that.
The plans call for, everything that is not water-dependent has to be removed from the flood zone area, and they will have a new building that will be a marine, I think it's called Marine Administration or something, but anyway, it will go back into the hill. So, it's pulled all the way back and up, so it's out of the flood area.
And what, where they're going to enlarge the entrance, because they want to bring the big boat in.
Right.
A lot of those activities that are along that portion are going to have to be moved. So, I think there's going to be a lot of renovations, so it's going to change quite a bit, given, I think, the ultimate plan of changing the dynamics of how that operation goes.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Barber? No other questions, we have resolution on page 69, file agenda packet.
I'll second it.
Move a second, steal?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
No.
Mr. Bizani?
No.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Worth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And my no is not because it's not needed, it's because of the amount of money. That's the only reason for my.
And Mr. Crisco.
Completely understand, it's, yeah.
I'm a, I am, I am totally in, in your ballpark with this.
I'm not looking forward to this discussion if we win this.
I know, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Next, update on utilities borrowing approved during the FY '26 budget. Ms. Callaway, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, we're going to bring that up, I guess, for the large audience. I'll cut the lights off here if you want. I don't know, there are two numbers. I only have a handful of slides this evening. I'm just going to provide a very brief update on the utilities borrowing. The intent is just to give everybody plenty of notice of what we are doing. We've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes to get this borrowing in the works, really since budget season. So, first, I wanted to provide a quick overview of what we're talking about money-wise. These are the projects that were approved in the fiscal year '26 budget. It came to $2.1 million. Ms. Legg has been here to provide an update on this plan, and the revised amount is $2.35 million, so a little bit of an increase. And you can see the pluses and minuses here, most notably, the pump station upgrades are going to be, we're going to invest quite a bit more into those. So, ultimately, the $3 million is what is listed in our resolution as a not-to-exceed amount, and we've done borrowings before. That just says, we're not going to go over that amount. We're not, that is not our final borrowing amount, and I have a timeline slide next. I'm not keeping up with my own slides here. But what that does is it gives us the flexibility, because as we all know, the prices of projects are changing daily, and some of these could come in higher or lower. So, that provides plenty of flexibility, because once we set that dollar amount, if we were to say 2.5 million, we have zero flexibility to go higher in this particular borrowing. So, that's the reason for the 3 million. And then, to give you a brief timeline, these dates are a little bit different because this agenda item shifted, so obviously, today is instead of July 15th, I'm here to request a public hearing for this borrowing. And we will also advertise this, will be in the newspaper over the next several weeks. On September 2nd, our financial advisors at, from Davenport will be here to provide an overview of several options. So, right now, we have a request for proposal out to a huge list of banks to provide their financing opportunities to us. We also, this week, submitted an application to the Virginia Resources Authority, who will also provide us interest rates, et cetera, and then Davenport will bring that all together to present to you to consider which option you would like to go with for this borrowing. So, the other update where it says September 16th and/or October 7th meetings, where we'll be asking for those final resolutions, it's going to have to be September 16th if we go with Virginia Resources Authority. They've notified us as of yesterday, actually, that they need everything finalized by September 19th, so that, we'll have to do that at the second September meeting. That tentative closing date, ultimately, sometime in the fall, we will have the funding to continue with these projects. I also wanted to give you a brief update on the school HVAC borrowing that was also approved during the fiscal year '26 budget process. That is on a similar timeline, it's going to be a little bit different. That's not a Virginia Resources Authority project, so there is a request for proposal out right now for that as well for financing. So, banks are looking at that and will provide us the information as far as their interest rates and what they have available for that. That will also involve the Economic Development Authority, and I met with them at their meeting this, two weeks ago, to mention to them, similar to how we financed the courthouse several, many, many years ago, it, it, the type of financing structure will require just a pass-through of the Economic Development Authority. None of their board had any questions, they were very comfortable with it. And as I mentioned, Mr. Cole and Davenport will also be going over that financing on September 2nd to consider those options as well. And I know that the schools are very anxious to get those HVAC projects moving. Any questions?
Ms. Callaway, on your slide for the total borrowing, some of these revised numbers have gone to zero. Can you refresh my memory as to why they're back to zero?
I think that those are just a reorganization of the timelines.
Okay, so they'll be on a future project list? Okay. Couldn't remember.
Yes, prioritization there.
But a follow-up to Mr. Crisco's question. If we borrow the 3 million and the others are less, some of these will be added to it.
Could be, yes, sir.
But if you look at the generators for the pump stations, we knocked that out. And we've been complaining for years about not having generators at pump stations. And then, the million gallon storage tank. I think, I think we need to look at it and consider, is 3 million enough, or does it need to be a little bit more and add some of these back in at this time? Especially the generators.
If, if I can explain about the generators, Ms. Legg has said that they would use their, I just had the word and I lost it, but it's the portable ones, I'm sorry, bypass generators that they can move, because now they have more.
So, putting generators on most of these, we've kind of come to the conclusion that with generators, we still have a lot of maintenance and repair, so permanent bypass pumps on these stations so that it's not really a generator, it's a motor and a pump that will allow us if the primary ones fail. So, we're going to probably change that up to be not just generators, but bypass, bypass pumps.
But, I know, but we're looking at temporarily deleting that number.
It was to try to keep the, the borrowing into what we thought we could afford with the rate structure we have right now. We talked about the board maybe giving us some money at the end of the year, and some of these ones that are less than a half million dollars, we could probably just pay for pay go on if we get some additional funding that would cut down what we borrow. But borrowing more money right now, and we don't know if we can pay our operating costs, is really kind of our concern right now. Give us another year to kind of.
But we will, if the money is available, we will move some of these up.
Absolutely. They all have to get done. We got a five and a 10-year plan, these all have to get done, yes, sir.
This is the max we could borrow based on our budget.
Right now.
So, is this going to be bond financing or just bank financing?
Bank financing.
Any other questions? No other questions, we have resolution on page 111. Move a second, right, Mr. Steel?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Worth?
Yes.[1772.02]
Ms. Callaway, you still up?
Still here.
Appropriation of state funds, school retention bonus, circuit court staffing, and the library state aid, no local dollars, and request for FY twenty-six appropriation carryover. Ms. Maria Callaway?
Thank you. This was modified a little bit. We tried to keep it to one agenda item when we added from two different meetings. So apologies for the long title there.
That's okay.
So there are a few appropriations here. There is a resolution beginning on page one-twenty, and I'll briefly go over those items. The first is $535,000 that the state has already provided to the schools to provide bonuses to their employees. So that is no local dollars, it's just appropriating that state funding to provide those bonuses. The second is a circuit court clerk position that was, a position in that office, that was also funded by the State Compensation Board in fiscal year twenty-six. So this will take that amount, that is not at the top of my list here, and appropriate those state dollars to that office for that position. And then we have, recently, we just learned that the library will get another $2,511 in state aid. That's a pretty standard. They, we true up whatever we estimated, and then the final state numbers at about this time of year. Then we have several carryover appropriations that are being requested, the first being sheriff vehicles, and then we also have some training for planning and zoning, printing for map books, for GIS, police supplies, and then lastly, some grant funds that we are requesting to have carried over. And there is a resolution on page one-twenty of your board packet.
So moved.
Move to second, Ms. Steel?
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Worth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Ms. Callaway, you still up?
Still here.
Appropriation of state funds, school retention bonus, circuit court staffing, and the library state aid, no local dollars, and request for FY twenty-six appropriation carryover. Ms. Maria Callaway?
Thank you. This was modified a little bit. We tried to keep it to one agenda item when we added from two different meetings. So apologies for the long title there.
That's okay.
So there are a few appropriations here. There is a resolution beginning on page one-twenty, and I'll briefly go over those items. The first is $535,000 that the state has already provided to the schools to provide bonuses to their employees. So that is no local dollars, it's just appropriating that state funding to provide those bonuses. The second is a circuit court clerk position that was, a position in that office, that was also funded by the State Compensation Board in fiscal year twenty-six. So this will take that amount, that is not at the top of my list here, and appropriate those state dollars to that office for that position. And then we have, recently, we just learned that the library will get another $2,511 in state aid. That's a pretty standard. They, we true up whatever we estimated, and then the final state numbers at about this time of year. Then we have several carryover appropriations that are being requested, the first being sheriff vehicles, and then we also have some training for planning and zoning, printing for map books, for GIS, police supplies, and then lastly, some grant funds that we are requesting to have carried over. And there is a resolution on page one-twenty of your board packet.
So moved.
Move to second, Ms. Steel?
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Worth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Next, recommendation for compensation study action. Ms. Steel, county administrator, and Ms. Tammy Nunn, Director of Human Resources.
I'm pretty much going to pass the baton and let Ms. Nunn do this, but I really want, and she should be, because this is why I want to thank her for all the work that she's done on this, day and night, weekday, weekend, and also assistance from Maria Callaway as well. This has been quite a venture.
Absolutely, it has. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So last month, you know that Dan Ripberger was here from Bolton, so he gave a high-level overview of the study that they performed. And as promised, tonight, we're going to talk about the cost of the study. But to begin with, we want to go over the overview and some highlights. Just to refresh your memories, Bolton reviewed county positions in comparison with sixteen different localities. That included more than 10,000 employees within that review. Our current system at the fiftieth percentile is in ninety, is in line, 98.3% with our peers. And that's really due to your efforts on the board with the COLAs that have been approved by you in recent years, and we believe that has allowed us to be more in line with the market, just based on those. So thank you for that. The review focused on full-time positions. Part-time positions will be reviewed internally, but we wanted to spend the time on those full-time positions where we've had a need, and we felt like the outside review was very important. So we appreciate the fact that the board allowed us to do the outside review and approve that to begin with. Bullet number four, constitutional officers. The county administrator and the county attorney were not reviewed because all of those positions are either elected or appointed. So let me just give a few notes as to why. The county administrator and the attorney, as you all know, have their own contracts that are approved by the Board of Supervisors. The base pay for constitutional officers is set by the Compensation Board, and then there's a supplemental, there's supplemental monies for those constitutional officers, which is set by the Board Policy Number 260. So that's why that group was not included in the Bolton compensation study. I will say that Bolton, back in February or March, when we initially began this whole process, did ask for everyone that we paid, you know? And so each employee, constitutional officer, they're on payroll, so their names, their salaries were included in that, but that's the reason why we didn't include them in the study, is just based on the way their pay is set up and approved by yourselves. As far as the pay study recommendations, the idea is that we will adjust, this is, you know, from Bolton, with their review, that we would adjust overall compensation ranges by approximately 1.7% to align with the market. So I wanted to make a note there, as far as that 1.7%. I know that some employees and staff have seen the presentation, because, you know, it's out there on the internet, and I want to point out that the 1.7% is the overall pay structure. That does not mean that every employee is going to get a 1.7% increase. So I wanted to make that clear. We're going to implement the grading structure for the county with your approval. The plan is to implement the new grading and step structure for the sheriff's sworn staff, which I'll go over in a few minutes. And we have a new model for calculating compensation for existing and new employees that will be really consistent and a great way, and an opportunity for us to do a better job of getting people on board and retaining them. The recommended adjustments are based on the current salary, which includes the 3% COLA that was effective July first. So just wanted to let you know that, you know, we looked at that amount, the current pay as of July first, when we looked at this costing. You know, Dan mentioned updating some titles to better reflect actual responsibility, and as a couple of examples, we have one person who's listed as a coordinator, but they're really a manager, so we're going to update that. We have another person who's a coordinator, but really is a supervisor. So that's, that's some of that. And some of the positions that they were talking about, as far as review of titles or social services positions, which we can't really change the titles, those are, are set by social services. As far as the impact of the recommended pay adjustments, this kind of gives you an idea where the focus was based on the market analysis. So the sheriff's office, that's the sworn officers, and by that, we mean the deputies, that, you know, the actual folks that are deputies and correctional officers. So quite a bit of those folks needed adjustments based on the market. You see utilities listed there. There's a spattering of general county, Gloucester County employees that needed to be reviewed, based again on the market analysis, and also social services. So those are the areas. Yes, Mr. Bizani?
A quick question. On the sheriff's sworn, the 96%, is that based on the fiftieth percentile for them?
It's, it's based on the positions. It's just based on, that 96% of the positions in the sheriff's department needed a review based on the market, regardless of the fiftieth percentile.
So they need.
That's how many people just really needed to be reviewed, so that we were marketable.
You're talking about heads?
Heads. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Next slide. Recommended pay adjustments. So again, you already saw the positions impacted to the right. In the middle, or the second column at the bottom, that annual cost of $554,901, that includes fringe benefits, and that would be the cost as of July first. What we'd like to recommend is that we implement this on September first, and if we implement this on September first, the cost would be $462,417. And I've asked for that, you know, we have had some adjustments the last few months. We had a bonus that you all approved, we had a cost of living that you all approved. September first just gives us some time. We're going to implement these different pay structures. We need to look at offering people that are coming on board into these new structures, and just, we just want the time to be able to do it right. Yes, Mr. Bizani?
Is this going to eliminate any kind of compression issues?
Yes.
It will eliminate them?
Yes. Yes. I feel very comfortable with this, and, you know, when I presented to you all January of this year, and we did in a work session that you all had, and we were looking at ranges, and this allows us for bigger ranges, which will allow us to be more marketable with our offers as well.
So for those who don't understand what compression is, and I had to deal with it when I was at the shipyard, someone makes $50,000 a year, new person comes in, makes $60,000 a year, and the guy that makes $50,000 has to train the new guy, or girl, that makes $60,000 a year. So this eliminates that gap between someone coming in and someone with an existing salary. So that's what a compression issue is. So this eliminates that.
Yes.
Unfairness, if you will.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Absolutely. What we budgeted was $690,000, so we really did not know. You know, we went into this not knowing what, which positions we were going to need to adjust based on market, and so we feel fortunate that with those that are impacted by the market review, I know that there's going to be employees who are disappointed, that they're not included in that market, but they weren't, you know, they just, as a result of the study, they, they were not, they're not going to be impacted by this. And I'm sorry for that. That doesn't mean that they're any less valued, but it is, this was our intent, to have somebody objective come in, take a look at the areas where we needed to focus, and that's what, what this is all about. Let's see. There we go. So as far as, you know, folks are always interested, you know, what's the breakdown for staff? I really believe that it's important to look at staff. Staff or frontline folks are, you know, everybody on the team is important, whether you're a manager, or a director, or a staff-level person, everybody's important. But it's very encouraging to me to see that 67% of our staff are the ones that are going to be impacted by this study. Just 2% of directors, they were already in line. The manager-supervisor level, probably more supervisor level than manager, but that's the categories of the folks that would get the increases there. This is the new pay scale. So I think that Dan mentioned this last month when he was here. Our former grades were from grade five to grade 32, so these numbers look a little bit different. The minimum and the maximum are going to be different, you know, than, than where we have been before. But again, it will help us, as Mr. Bizani said, with compression. I really hope that you all will approve this. We have had a lot of staff that are very anxious to know, you know, what the impact is, and if it will allow us to give them some peace and give them an opportunity for retention. The sheriff's scale and step structure, I did not put the actual numbers for their scale. If I did, it would be really hard to read. But on the left is the correction step structure, on the right is the law enforcement. Sheriff is aware that the correction structure is just a little bit different than the law enforcement, as far as the actual scales where they start and stop, but you get an idea that with the beginning, where they start at step one and go up to step 15, that compression that Mr. Bizani is talking about, there's some width between there, and you can see that on an annual basis, they'll go up a step, which will, you know, we're really kind of excited about that opportunity. And I think he's really happy about it as well. So I hope that you all will agree, and we've put in a lot of work, and the staff is very interested in your decision this evening. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does Sheriff Warren have an issue with people leaving his forces for other higher pay?
It is very competitive. It's, it's, it's just a very competitive market that we're in. We were able last year to secure a deputy from Newport News. She brought a few deputies with her. That was very, very nice. We appreciate that very much. Great people know great people. But it is a very competitive market.
So if we were to provide the sheriff, the, the, the ones who are out, out on the street, a little more without help, keep those folks employed and not, not move away?
That's the desire, and I think that, that he would agree, based on the meetings that we've had. He feels very comfortable with what we have.
And he's, he's seen this?
Oh, he's seen this, yes.
He's seen, okay.
And the reason why I really needed to meet with him, and other directors and constitutional officers might be jealous that I did, that we did that, he extends his own offers, and I needed, you know, I was charged to make sure that people's experience was accurately reflected, and that they were placed appropriately on scale, and because his is a scale, a grade and step system, we had to talk about that.
Because next to fire and rescue, these good folks have the highest risk on the job.
True.
Their lives are at stake.
That's true.
Both fire and rescue and sheriff's department.
Mm-huh.
So it would be good to compensate them, so that they feel like they're valued, and they feel like they don't have to move to another locality to make, you know, another, another pay raise.
The, the new step program that's going in, I think, is exactly what will help with that, because they, if they perform satisfactorily, they will get either a 3% or a 2% step, like other departments offer, that we have not. We've been doing the .33 and the .33. So this is very much about not only getting them to where they should be, but for retention with that step program. Also, do you want to explain about the, we added in a step on the pay grade? Or do you want me to do that?
Um, you can.
Just, just in case anybody's like, looking back at what was in the previous packet, 118 is a new number. And there was no difference between department head levels and the deputy county administrators for a division-type leader. So say, for example, a director of public works. So there was a, a perfect gap for it, and we went in, and that's why there's 118 instead of 118, if you look at your previous sheets.
And, and where would the sheriff department be as far as grade ID on this particular charge?
Okay. So there's, there, I'm sorry, Mr. Bizani, theirs is different. If, if I put it up there, it would be too tight for you to even see the numbers.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's, it's a grade and step system.
Okay.
Mm-huh.
Can I see that? Would you mind providing that to me personally?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. We can, we can pull it up. Yeah. Absolutely. I didn't bring my laptop with me, but I can trust Maria's got hers. Any other questions or concerns?
Yeah.
I can make, I made some.
Dr. Worth?
I got a list.
I have a list, too. Do any of these position titles change the job description themselves? So do you have to go in and change the job descriptions based on these analyses?
So the job descriptions, the directors were, it was explained to the directors when we started the process, that they needed to have the most updated job descriptions, which we provided to Bolton, and they reviewed those as part of their process for the market review. So no, we don't need to go back and change. I mean, there are a couple of title changes that we think would be more accurately reflected, but it doesn't require a job description change.
Why did you label grades 101 to 119, just out of curiosity?
Okay. So that was Bolton.
Oh, okay.
And we went with it.
Okay.
We paid them for the study as the expert, and we, we decided to go with their ranges. The other thing that I would, I would say as, as an HR professional, if you will, you know, you, you have to look at equity. I mean, you know, somebody may come to me and say, gosh, I can get this, but again, I got to look at the rest of the team. You know, what, where's that going to take, and where does it end, you know? So you, you just have to do the right thing. Hopefully, we've got work environments that, and folks that enjoy the team that they work with and the work that they do. Sometimes it's, money isn't everything, but it's an important factor and we certainly want to be competitive. We never said we would be the number one payer. We never said we'd be the lowest payer, but we want to be competitive. So, so that's our goal. Yes, sir.
One more question. So with the institution of this new grade, those people can see these different grades and what they can shoot for in subsequent years if they stay with the system.
Sure.
And that's something that I think is relevant to keeping people on so they can really see where they can go if they persist in their activities within a particular group, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Employees will have this available.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Crisco.
So on the one slide, we had a mention of constitutional officers and county administrators and county attorney not being reviewed.
Right.
Unfortunately, in the study, I found a constitutional officer as well as a county attorney's salary being reviewed. Since it is a compensation study, I, I think I'd have liked to have seen everybody just so we could see where we are. Not that they necessarily would have changed at all, but being that it was stated, I'm just, you know, the, the elected folks, they, some of them did appear, and then the other county attorney and county administrator, which are hired by the board, is a different animal, but at the same time, this pocket of money is all taxpayer money, so I wish we'd have seen everything. My next question is, that $690,000 that we included in this FY '26 budget, that was one-time money, correct?
Yes. Was it? I'm sorry.
So it's a recurring, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes.
The total cost for implementation going forward is $554,901. So then we're going to have a $146,000. Okay.
Yes, that's an annual amount, absolutely.
You're saying we have a bogey? Next budget, next year?
Well, right now, well, we, I'm sure we've already spent it, but there's, I mean, to me, that's, that's telling me that we're going to have $145,199 that we have budgeted that we will have extra as we get to next year's budget, which I'm sure is already eaten up, but it's, it's a good problem to have. How will we account for the 3% increases on the Sheriff's Department for their satisfaction? I mean, is that already going to be built in as well, or are we going to need to have money set aside for these?
More money.
More money. And I bet the $145,000 will be a challenge to correct those in the meantime. Yeah, it's just with the lack of executive summary and, and what we received and, and the, the two things, I, I gleaned more tonight than I did the other night with the Bolton Group here, having the chance to look a little more intently at what was presented and what was given to us, but I still think there's a long ways to go because this is, this is nice to see, but I, I just don't like that, I don't, I don't think we got the full picture from Bolton when they were here for what we paid for.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bazani.
So I'm sure all of you, when you read the package that we got, had I presented a package like that to my superiors without a summary in the front, some, maybe a lot of these things here, we could have seen that in the package. I'd have, I'd have been fired. You, you always provide a summary for executives to look at, say, okay, I see what you're saying, and if I want to drill down, I can go back and turn the pages and see. I, I had a difficult time understanding, after I studied it two or three times, I started to understand it, but this kind of clarified for me what I was looking at. But it would have been better, as Mr. Crisco had indicated, that we had this upfront that Bolton could have come up with a summary of results as opposed to just a, it was basically a data dump is what it was, with no rhyme or reason, no analysis, no, you know, no suggestions, no recommendations. Here, here it is. We expect you guys to understand it in two weeks. That was unfair.
Any other questions, remarks? Anything from Mr. Dunn? Okay, we have a resolution, page 125.
I understand I wasn't besmirching you.
Oh, I understand completely.
Okay.
I understand completely. I'm not concerned. Thank you so much.
And I will say before the resolution also, you know, the last meeting, the book, I understood more tonight than I did.
Right. It was a book. That's why it took us, yeah.
This was, this was good. I like the way you broke this down and the way it's been presented to us tonight, so thank you.
You're welcome.
If I can, and this is not defending Bolton because just being neutral, I mean, we did do a lot of work after they were, their work was done because we had to account for everybody's experience that they did not know other than their years here. So all that had to be done manually, but the information that you all were given was sort of out of context. That normally does not go to the elected officials. You all asked for it, so we provided it. It wasn't prepared in a way that it, I think if they'd have known ahead of time that all of that would have gone to you, they would have done something differently. We met with them on Teams and went over all of that for hours. So I just kind of wanted you to know that that was, if, if we'd have understood that more of that detail was wanted, we, we should have told Bolton to, to prepare something.
Did, did Bolton provide a summary when they provided you that data?
They, we, we went over every single packet, so.
Was this information given to you by Bolton?
This is the information that comes from what they.
Looks like they shoveled a stall and threw it over the wall to us.
They give you the bones and the structure, but you have to put your people in, like they tell you, this position belongs here. Well, you might have five people in that position that have varying levels of tenure and experience because maybe they worked 20 years before they came here. So we took their rules and their structure and had to go in and, Tammy, Ms. Dunn pulled all the personnel files from people and what they had before they came here, as well as what they have here, and put everybody on the scale where they go. And they did tell us in that process that we would be, you know, that that was going to be something we would have to apply because they wouldn't know for 400 employees what their background was. But it was a lot of work and going at it hindsight, if somebody asked me, you know, hey, we're thinking about hiring and going through this process, I would probably give some good advice to them on things to watch for.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Okay, yeah, Dr. Orth.
Regardless of what we have just heard, I just want to say, I appreciate everything you guys have done internally. And I know that you have.
Yes, well.
Yeah, and we know that you have spent countless hours talking to employees and they've wanted to see this information pretty quickly. You've had to go and do all the basic work.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to let you know, I appreciate that because, you know, they are good employees, we want to keep them, you got to do the best, and you want to be fair.
Absolutely.
At the same time, and that's, that's a tough part.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Sure thing.
Okay, resolution on page 125. Second, Ms. Steele.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
We will be meeting with employees starting tomorrow to share this good news with them.
Okay. Thank you then. Okay, next. Tourism initiative opportunities, Ms. Steele.
I want to start with a governor's announcement that we received today because the 2024 numbers for tourism just came in, and they were very good. The governor said, thank you, that we had a record high of $35.1 billion in visitor spending in 2024 in the state of Virginia, which is a 5.4% increase, and I'm very eager to see how we did. We had about a 5% last year, so hopefully we were as, climbing up the same way that the state did. I also wanted to provide a quote that the Secretary of Commerce and Trade said, "Tourism is more than just an economic driver. It plays a foundational role in sustaining Virginia's workforce. In fact, one out of every four restaurant jobs and one out of every four recreation sector jobs in the Commonwealth are entirely supported by visitor spending. That means every traveler who comes to Virginia is helping to support local workers." I thought that was very timely. I also wanted to say that this is not a novel idea. Colonial Williamsburg was brought in by the Chamber of Commerce in 1972 to do a study on Gloucester becoming a tourist attraction, and they presented this entire report, and most of the things that we're talking about were in that report. And, you know, I mean, it talks about our natural resources, how beautiful we are, we're a quaint place, how close we are, et cetera, you know, but some of the things to do that, to make facilities open and available, all those things that haven't followed through are, are still important. This also, this topic was also very important to the 325 years ago, to the 350th Committee, where the Board of Supervisors asked citizens from all over different realms of the county to join, and they were on different committees of aging and, you know, just lots of different topics of committees, and they came up with goals and objectives for the county. And in fact, that's where we started with our formal tourism program, and one of the members of that committee was Tom Austin, which some of y'all may have known him. He used to own the restaurant down at, at the Marina, York River Yacht Haven, and he also owned restaurants in Williamsburg. And he was saying, you're not going to be able to do this unless you have a lodging tax. And that's what really got us kicked off, was having an actual budget to do things. So why are we, we're looking at using their county's, going the wrong way, thank you, ram mouse instead, utilizing the county's natural and historic assets for economic development? And why are we focusing on tourism? And I, I know that the board has had this information, so I don't want to read it to you all. Hopefully, while I'm talking, members of the audience or at here or at home can take a look at it if they haven't seen the board packet. But these things on this list right here, especially the, the top two are ones that have been talked about over and over again at strategic planning sessions with the board. We are who we are, and if we don't have the resources to attract people, they're not coming. If we don't offer the incentives, they're not coming. We would love for high tech to come, but yet we don't want a data center because we know what that means. We have high tech that comes in and dribbles, you know, where somebody can come and work here with their small business at home, but we don't have high tech coming in and we don't have fiber. We're not connected to the, the world route. We're not connected, you know, to the main Google centers and things. So we're, we're not going to get those people. We also, I think in the community, very much lack of, have a lack of support for industrial growth. If we wanted to open a paper mill, if there was another need for one, I would assume there would be as many people coming out, if not more, against that, no offense to West Point, that came out to the data center meeting. That's not who we think of. So the idea here is to use many of our existing businesses and have similar businesses and use our assets. And that's playing to our strengths. These are things that we and you at the board, at the strategic planning session said, what do you like about Gloucester? And it's the waterfront, it's the, you know, the rural areas, but we also need to admit that while we call Gloucester rural, Gloucester Point is not rural. It is urban by definition. It may have been rural, but it hasn't been rural for a long time. Even years and years ago, at the population, it was considered urban. This is a great time looking at not only the 250th commemoration and being able to ride that wave of excitement, but also next year is the county's 375th. So we have things that you can take advantage of that hopefully help you and give you that, that lift up. Investing in tourism will pay off. I will be the first to say that tourism can have its ups and downs according to the economy, but there's not a business, I think, that we could think of that, I mean, even funeral directors and funeral homes have changes that have changed how their models are done. I mean, you know, anything can change, and so there's no guarantee in life, but these assets that we have are going to be around. Most of them are natural and the others, you know, historical, cultural, et cetera, are things that we have in place, and I think even if there's bad years because the economy is hurting, it might be that we don't make as much that, but we'll be right set in place to keep going when it comes back up. In addition to the list of things here, I, I didn't mention VEMS on that particular list. There's, there's more attraction there with VEMS and the attention that they've gotten recently from their new building to what they will be doing, to their donations, to the fact that they have a bachelor's degree now. The, I know it's rough on us from a tax base when you have either state or federal land that isn't on the tax rolls, but when you have the benefit of students and faculty and others that are coming over and here, it, it, it should more than make up for that. As I mentioned, we don't have the 2024 stats, but the 2023 stats, we had $47.3 million in visitor spending. But when you look at the fact that Gloucester is 46th out of 133 in population, meaning our popular, there's so many more localities that have a smaller population than us, but we're 76th in visitor spending. So those little counties and towns that are small, actually, I think that's all, no, that is all, no, that is all county, sorry. Smaller counties are bringing in more visitor spending than we are. And so are we doing all that we can do to bring up that industry and help our economy? And I try not, I try to avoid some of the social media that is quite insulting and, and downright mean, but I will say that, you know, it doesn't matter whether I agree with somebody or not, my belief, and it doesn't matter what my background is, my belief is that these type of facilities bring in money, and that's why I'm talking about it, not because I'm a former Parks and Recreation and Tourism Director, and there are quite a few former PR and T people who are county administrators. I, my view is very broad and, and it, it's not from some past connection. All right. And then the positive economic impacts, the multiplier effect is probably the one that's the hardest for me to stomach as a fiscally conservative person of questioning, well, if everybody's multiplier effect is correct, there's not enough money to go around. But we do know that when people spend money, it affects other businesses, it affects what they do, you know, the number of employees and things. So that's an indirect big boost that don't have an actual dollar for at this point, but the sales tax, the meals tax, the lodging tax, the business taxes that are related, those are things that we can not only look at now and measure, but we can look at and measure with steps that are taken to see if we're being successful or not. What is the investment and is it paying off? And I also believe that these things that, that are mentioned in here are going to benefit residents. So it's a bang for the buck in that regard that if you have, for example, the improvements at Gloucester Point Beach and people decide to stay here instead of going over to Yorktown and buying Ben &amp; Jerry's ice cream, and instead they buy from our food truck here and they pay our meals tax, et cetera, you know, that, that's good because now we have facilities that are better than what we have currently. I mean, we would have them, and that would help our overall, keep the spending in Gloucester. I know that was a big thing that Dr. Orth pushed for, for years and continues to do. The potential for economic growth, we are so close to anybody who can drive here without a, a major effort. You know, three hours from DC, people who are looking for a getaway. If you study tourism, you know that a lot of times what brings in success is having that sort of knowledge or experience that you can go back to the workforce and say, look what I did this weekend, and kind of the bragging rights because you find about these little secrets and things, and you, you do your little getaways. And we are very situated, very good for that, as well as the fact that we're so close to these much larger establishments like Colonial Williamsburg, and we, and from the previous studies, that's where we're getting most of our people. The ones that are coming here from tourists are already in the area, and then they're coming through here. It would be better if we could be the actual destination for them, and then maybe they go to CW while they're here. Or maybe they've been to Colonial Williams before, Colonial Williamsburg, and they don't want to go back because they've seen it, been there, done that, but we offer something that is good enough that they will come. And the, the goal there is more heads in beds. That's where it makes the difference. Historical attractions, we have a ton. What we have, though, are sites that range from being open daily and they're really accessible to only open limited hours or they're only open for events. That was one of the things back in 1972 that was saying, you. That was one of the things back in 1972 that was saying, "You've got to be able to deliver." I've heard many times people complain about if they don't know when a restaurant is open or not because they have hours that are scattered, or if they're out of doughnuts at 11 o'clock in the morning when you decide to go by there, people get frustrated. We are, some of our facilities need to be able to have those improvements to be more reliable. In addition to the sites, we do have driving tours too, and things to try to help people that are self-guided. So currently, and we've had for years, our country stores and post offices tour, we have an African-American driving tour, and we have walking tours and historic building, the explanations about them, not a guided tour. We have many fantastic outdoor recreation attractors, attractions. All this water, now we need to get people to it and help them to enjoy themselves. We have some issues. We have a lack of playgrounds and things for little children to do. We have a lack of sports facilities that are fully developed, and we have hope with that, though, with maybe some commercial and private development that will be happening. We've talked about with Ben Harris at the swamp and things that he may do. I did want to note that at the Peninsula Mayors and Chairs Meeting, the mayor for Williamsburg stated that they are ahead of schedule on the large sports facility that's being built behind, that was a regional facility, that's being built behind the Williamsburg Visitor Center. And even though it's not open, they have already booked seven, over 70,000 hotel nights with events that are coming there. We're not Williamsburg. We have to Gloucesterize things, but it just tells you that they made a good decision with what they're doing there. I am suggesting for the Board to consider, and there's other things that could be done, but these were the topics that have come up before and seem to be, you know, rising to the top, a potential for three tourism development initiatives. One, looking at Main Street, the Courthouse Village area, the other one at Gloucester Point or Gateway, and then a third, sort of an ambiguous designation, but our working waterfronts and waterfront access. And I think these are the most promising, and I'll go over each of these. So first of all, and I will say, I have many more slides that are in this presentation that go through and define each of these. So I was trying to just, trying to, you know, throw it together. If the Board is interested in pursuing any of these, then I think, first of all, we need public input. But second of all, there's more information that we have that we can provide that might make you, give you a better background on it. Main Street improvements, addressing pedestrian access, parking landscaping, our historic buildings, the rehab, the History Center, which we'll show the picture of, and the redevelopment of GVFR. There are more things. This does not include the Hutchison property on here. So there's more than this list. This doesn't talk about Route 14 and the old movie theater, but this is the main list We have a problem with our wall being hit that has been a problem ever since it was a wooden fence. If you read the history, it was being run into when it was a wooden fence, and it's been run into as a brick wall. And it's scary to think of the lives that could have been lost, either by the driver or somebody else that would have been hurt in an accident. And it's also very frightening to think that we have irreplaceable buildings that are unique in history that could have been permanently damaged or destroyed. So we've been talking about how do we address this? And I will throw in my personal opinion, and as a person who's around this court circle a lot and walking to and from other, you know, the buildings around here, I feel like I have a well-sound opinion, that we have cars that are not going 25 miles an hour when they hit the circle, not nearly. I do think we probably need to look at Gloucester Point Beach on Great Road, and probably here too, some of those flashing signs that remind you of the speed that you're going. We do not have a culture that recognizes pedestrians and stops for them to cross the street. When I went to Boston recently, and people were honking at me and all kinds of things were going on and driving is crazy, they absolutely stopped for pedestrians. I mean, like, everybody knows, and it's just a completely different environment. I've stood and waited, and people just fly by. They don't even know you're there. And that's not a good thing if you're trying to get people to mill around and go to different stores and enjoy different sights. So traffic calming and slowing down traffic is a help, I believe would be a help to protecting the wall. And I spoke with Ricky Wyatt, who did the design work in here, which I think we're all very pleased with, it's fantastic looking, and he did this pro bono, just kind of a sketch, to talk about where we could go with this. And looking at the middle lane from where we do the detours during the Daffodil Festival and other events, and potentially landscaping that and doing some slowing down, expanding where the curbs are to try to make people, it would keep them from being able to go straight, they would hit the traffic island first. Mr. Kearns and others have talked about, we need, we have this strange circle, it's not a typical circle, but we need to reverse, they believe we need, you know, want to reverse how we do it, so that the traffic on Main would have to yield to the people in the circle. That's another consideration for the Board to look at, of asking VDOT, working with VDOT, of how we can improve and make things safer. We have requested information with this background of the previous slide, of how many accidents to prove to VDOT that we need some safety funds to make this situation better, because, again, more people coming, more people coming into the circle, there's the fear of someone getting hit. Main Street beautification, I'd like to take this time to make a correction to a couple of the citizens that I returned calls and emails to. I had spoken with folks from Main Street Preservation Trust who do the beautification, who have done the capital investment and have been doing the maintenance. And I was believing that they were going to stop this year. They have, and so I had stated this to others, that tonight I was going to be looking at, "Can we take this over? How do we do this?" Because these sites are so important. I am very pleased to say that I stand corrected. Their Board has agreed to continue the beautification maintenance, and we don't have to take that on. With what Mr. Nikosia said, and he was receiving calls, and you all probably were too, about the appearance, I mean, it shows one thing, that people care. They don't want to see it look like that. They love how beautiful it is, and we need to keep it that way, and it does make a difference. The reason that they were delayed in doing the maintenance, they, their staff person who does this, or their contractor, needed to recertify with VDOT. And you can't do the in-the-road work and all that, and so that just happened. It's being addressed. We, you know, thank them for everything they're doing. One thing that we may want to talk to them in the future about is, if they have a snag, is there a way that our crew can be a backup? So if for some legitimate reason they have an issue, then I don't necessarily want to send Parks and Rec people in to go landscape somebody else's property, I mean, it's VDOT's, but to go in there and maybe cut the wrong flower or things, some of the weed. But at the same time, I would love to be able to be a partner with them so we don't have a situation like that just happened. Lots of contributions that are going on that you can read, the Art District, I'm really ready to bring that just, you know, forward. I need to pull it all together, but it should be a very easy thing, and hopefully the Board will support it. Our county-owned historic buildings, you will be having a report soon that'll be done by the consultant that we hired. There is much money that is needed to be spent on our historic buildings, and I know no one wants to see anything happen to them under any of our watches. And it's so much money, but it's going to be over a period of years. Having tourists use these facilities and be paying for fees of things is a way to help get those projects moved forward. And also, the projects themselves, when they're happening, are a great tourist attraction. How many people have gone to Jamestown to watch the archaeology? We have things going on that somebody could be a docent in explaining and really giving a great historical review for them and a lot of news coverage. The Body-Tot Hotel, Body-Tot Building, former tavern from colonial days, is our keeper of the county's history. I used to refer to it as Grandma's Attic, which maybe is not a nice thing, but I would go in there and I would see things that I recognized from my family. We have that, but we've moved forward and have some wonderful exhibits and have some even better exhibits coming. And we've had great staff, not only Ms. Deal for many, many years, but Robert Kelly that we have now is professionally trained, he's fantastic. But I feel like we're sitting on a goldmine. We're sitting on a tavern that could be rehabilitated, not restored, rehabilitated to give the experience of a tavern, and maybe even so unique that it gives the 20th century experience too, when it was a hotel run by the two sisters. And so if that happens, what happens to the museum? And the fact that the building is not accessible is an issue. So Robert Kelly went to one of our local architects and said, "Would you help us and work on a concept for how we could build another building and have this combined facility where we could have the Body-Tot Hotel be a more of an attraction?" I don't want to say like a Mount Vernon or Stratford Hall, but something similar in that that you might refer to. And the back building would be accessible and through a glass walkway could connect to the building so that we would have accessibility. And in the back, that also is against the lawn on Carriage Court, which is great for outdoor events. So we're endearingly referring to this as a new History Center. And this is probably the loftiest goal, but it's like you've got to have the vision. The other localities that are thinking of, you know, they're like, what are they planning for? We don't, we're not saying a year on it, we're not saying how to fund it, but do we want this? And do we start that vision so that those things start to come together? We do know that when the fire department is built, there's going to be property that is going to be given to the county. So whether you all would like to go ahead and start looking at a feasibility study, there's definitely, I've shown you pictures of fire stations and things that have been rebuilt. There's opportunities here for all kinds of retail and also for additional public parking, which is desperately needed. The second site, Gloucester Point, when we have safe places for people to walk, like we do Main Street, they come all the time. They drive here to walk. We see all kinds of things happen. That doesn't happen enough at Gloucester Point, and I think people there want it to feel like a village. And so we've had three different plans written over time, which, again, are saying the same kinds of things about what they want, from recreation to preserving history to addressing the traffic. It's time that we look at this gateway enhancements. I'm going to call my contact at VDOT just to see if we have any more information on what the final is supposed to look like, but it's probably not going to be until next spring or summer before the Toll Plaza is going to be completely gone, and they'll be looking at how the road will be redone. We've asked for help on that, that we can do, you know, more beautification and make it a gateway, but there's no funding for that, there's no mechanism for that to happen, and VDOT is not going to do that. Gloucester Point, the master plan, we'll, so many things to make that site walkable, connect it. I mean, it just, there's a lot of potential to reclaim Gloucester Point Beach as a wonderful family recreational facility, which unfortunately, it's kind of lost that reputation. And so park improvements, they're in the CIP. One I want to note over here is that red line on the left, and once we finish that survey work, we'll be checking into whether we can get Recreation Access Grant, which is 100%, but generally, you've got to have that 50-foot right-of-way, and I don't know that we can do it, get the funds to help make some road improvements without going 50-foot wide. But there's the potential to, that paper road that's shown, to be able to connect to Lafayette Heights and make all of those properties much easier to get into and also to access the park facility. That was other projects that we've mentioned to you before. Business redevelopment, we get complaints. I've had numerous complaints about this facility, and the only reason I would put it up here is because it's for sale. If it was operated right now and somebody, somebody business, I wouldn't do this, but it is for sale right now. And this is the opportunity where an EDA, where the Board can look at, do we want to go ahead and purchase sites so that there can be brownfield grants and clean them up and then turn them around and have it be more of what you would want in a gateway area? There's incentives that could be done for thematic promotions of the village, like taking the old auction house and making it look more nautical or more colonial, as they did in Yorktown. Same thing here with taking, these are gas stations that have been renovated, taking the bank. I mean, you could just make it look much more appealing, but that's something that other localities are going to try to, they may, and not all of them, are going to be able to offer some incentives that we don't have any now. You all know that we've talked about whether a hotel would be appropriate for where the Gloucester Point site is. VEMS, already mentioned, great economic impacts. They're going to be doing a huge landscaping program, God bless you, that will be on Great Road, that is going to benefit all of us. The third area is looking at our waterfront, our working watermen, our congressmen's working on that, others, you know, the state, it's, everybody's pushing, how, whether it's the catfish and, you know, trying to help that industry not go away and make it grow. Other localities have done that. The site in, that's, that NC Oyster Company is a really fun place in North Carolina where you can go buy your oysters and go hear the band and all those kind of things. The bottom one is, again, not the scale of Gloucester, but that's just one little section of the designs for the new seafood park where people are coming in, and you, they have a kitchen and cooking and instruction and buy your fresh seafood. Much could be done to help, and also the RACE grant. I have not finished reading the entire packet, but I know that the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission is going to be working on, there was an 800 and something thousand-dollar grant on the Guinea Marshes. That was to do an initial assessment. That led to a $10 million grant to preserve the Guinea Marshes, and there's a potential for another $10 million. We should be partnering and riding with that of how, because it talks through that grant about saving the seafood industry, about preserving places like, so we want to work with that and help with those enhancements. Tourism zones, I wasn't even aware of this, but when I looked, it was like, well, we're sure not on that list. To become a tourism zone, it's a resolution ordinance change, but it requires, tourism zones are places that offer special incentives or have certain regulations for tourist facilities. There is a list online, it's a matrix chart that goes for pages and pages of all the different types of incentives that places offer. They do things like for hiring credits. If you bring in so many jobs, we'll give you this kind of discount. There's discounts for the first couple of years to help, things to help with hookups, giving them payment plans for utilities hookups. There's many different ways that we could look at becoming a tourism zone and becoming a dot on that map. I don't think that the County Administration Office and our Parks, Rec and Tourism as it currently is, or this Board of Supervisors, is set up to make the kind of things that I just showed happen. And so my suggestion is that the Board look at creating a Tourism Financing Development Authority. And it's an enabling act, it's very similar to an EDA, it's very specific as to how you form it with the seven-member Board, it has the funding that comes in from the law- It has the funding that comes in from the lodging tax, which we already set aside, would go directly to that. And then there's other things that can help support the funding. And they can get, like, that would be their focus, where we would all be doing this as time comes about or, you know, but this would be the focus of what's the priority that the board sets. And, you know, because you can't do everything at once, and what I just said is enough to blow people away, I understand that. But trying to look at where can we fit things in and who can do it? And having that Tourism Development Authority be the ones to do that. So they can do everything that an EDA can do, except for doing the bonds. But they can borrow, they can, they just can't sell bonds. And there's different kinds of revenue potential that would help to have that EDA be able to get things moving and focus on the grants. And I just really think it would become a priority that it's not now and can't be. And these are the typical kinds of roles. I mean, they can acquire property, they can do capital construction, they can finance. Obviously, everything needs to be related to what the board would want. They cannot, the board would have to approve incentives. They can approve the projects they work on and have that direction provided to them. So I very much appreciate the long time for this presentation. It's serious because, as Mr. Mowery was talking about, all we have right now are houses. And if I knew of a different business, I am looking. Ms. Spring is looking. We are trying. We want to develop, but basically, it's retail and houses right now. So I would hope there's, that the board may have some questions or some guidance so we know which way to go.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
So you said the funding would come from the lodging tax. What do we get now annually from the lodging tax?
Not enough. And Maria, I'll ask if you don't mind pulling that. It has gone up, but one of the things that we need to really make that be more helpful is another hotel. It has, it has grown, and I'm sorry I didn't have that with me now, but I will tell you, like, York County, they do a, about a $300,000 appropriation for their combined EDA tourism group. So they fund, and that gives that organization some startup money for what they're doing each year. So there's that kind of thing, as well as the solicitations of grants, but that would be a base.
It's about $440,000, and my computer's coming up, so if you want to know some of this.
No, that's fine. And then the other question I'd have is, what are we spending that money on currently? So we can look at what is available? Because, you know, 300,000 is a great number. However, York County is, we're not even York County here. I mean, you mentioned their new facility in Williamsburg, which was being funded by an additional tax that, that I actually tried to get us included in and was told, "Thanks, but no thanks. Don't need you, don't want you." Because that's where that revenue is coming from. They have an additional taxing mechanism that's very similar to what we have for our school renovation, which is huge.
Mr. Grisco, was that the one, the percent?
It's the Tommy tax.
It's the Tommy tax, right. And it's made a ton of money. They have done very well with it.
And it goes to all those three localities, which is York County, Jamestown, you know, okay.
York, Jamestown, Historic Triangle, Tommy tax.
They also have the transportation tax that we don't have too, which is .7, and they've done things there.
And you mentioned another number, about $47.3 million in spending?
Visitor spending.
Visitor spending. Of that money, how much do we see of that 47.3? Because that's a big number, and for some reason, I bet our share of that is a fraction of that amount.
So it's economic development that if you don't own the hotel, if you don't own the facility, it's really that you're helping with economic development where those businesses are going, they're paying their taxes and there's indirect, so your meals, your lodging. I would think that there would be specific goals that we would want to set for how we would expect those numbers to go up. But the amount that would come to Gloucester County, that's really all we get is a portion of the sales tax. There is no, it's, that indirect. Now, again, if we had a facility like some places have, that would be different. But, I mean, I'm talking like a baseball stadium or something that we own. We don't have something that's going to bring in direct money to the county to help fund a TDA.
Right, so there's our, there's our answer to our problem. We don't have a funding mechanism yet, and we can't afford to build it and they will come. We are not the field of dreams, unfortunately. If we were, we have other needs that we need to put our dollars and cents into because I would hate for someone to start building a hotel here and us go, "Sorry, we can't pump water to your hotel." I mean, that's, that's our issue where we're at today. And that's, that's where, that's where I am on this.
Similar to the broadband, you know, we put all these poles up, but nobody wants to, nobody wants to get into it, so, but that was Virginia tax money, all of our money, actually.
When you get a chance.
Did you want to know about the, what that money goes into?
Yeah, where that 440 is broken out and going.
Yeah, and it was 441 is what we budgeted, so I was pretty close. The way that that funding, that funding goes into paying for the entire tourism department, and then it has also been funding the capital plan here at the, for the Court Circle Historic Preservation Study. So that then accumulates into a committed fund balance for tourism. And so that has been netting an income over the last several years that's been accumulating in that fund balance.
And what is that fund balance?
That fund balance is currently $573,000 estimated for the end of fiscal year '25. And that is before the commitment of $250,000 that we budgeted in 2026. So that would be the 2025.
So that 573 is going to go down by 250?
Well, that's, and we're going to get more.
Sure.
Yeah, so we've been bringing in a net income this year that we actually, it was the first time we dipped into the fund balance a little bit to transfer some of that money, and that was by $67,000. So total tourism revenue was 459, and then we funded the tourism department and 250 for the capital for 2025, and we had $67,000 we had to use out of the fund balance, so.
We're averaging half a million dollars or so? Is that what I'm hearing?
In revenue, just under.
Okay, so if I kind of go back to about 13 years and six months, when I first got on the board, if you recall, one of the first things I said was, "What do we do to make this county business-friendly?" And we obviously have done some things that have made things easier, but as I reflect on those 14 years, the types of things that I was hoping we would have haven't happened. You know, trying to attract high-tech industry, manufacturing, thinking that we'd have the page site, that something would happen, that hasn't happened. That's been a little bit of, I would say disappointment to me, but it's one that maybe in a reflection was not forward-thinking, but perhaps, you know, up high in the sky because we've talked about what is Gloucester going to be like. Will it ever be a commitment to attract a lot of businesses? Right now, it's retail. The jobs that we have are not the type of jobs you have across the river that pay a very high salary. What do we do to try to help the county financially? This might be one opportunity. Again, it's trying something. Now, I agree, we've got a lot of other issues ahead of us. We keep on hearing about utilities, water, utilities, water, utilities, water. And that obviously is a necessary component if we want to attract more businesses. We are going to have the issue now with the toll off, what do we do about growth? We have people that say we don't want to grow, but then how do we approach that? I mean, there are all these interacting factors that all go back to my thinking of the types of things that we try to do to enhance the community in various and sundry ways. A lot of good things have happened, and we do have, we've got water, you know, but we have little access for people to get to water. When you think about the places where people could launch their boats or whatever, we just have that little beach at Gloucester Point. That's nothing. That's really, unfortunately, a sliver. People vie for spots at warehouse landing, that's, and we can't get any more of that, unfortunately. We've tried, we've made a lot of effort to see if we could improve that by adding additional areas, but that has not happened to present. So I don't know what the answer is. You know, I think tourism is a big factor in what we could do to help the county, and it doesn't mean that we'll get more people living here, but then when people come to visit and they like the county, guess what? They want to move here. So I don't know, I'm torn by this. I mean, I liked the presentation, and everything you said rings true about what's happening, but to do all the things that you want to do is going to take money. And, you know, we're, we already know, I mean, we've had, I mean, we want to support our employees, you know, with, you know, appropriate salaries. You know, that is not an easy task when, again, our real estate taxes are the thing that pay the bill. And that doesn't ring true with a lot of people who don't want our taxes to go up. We had, we have a tough battle. And of course, we've dealt with all the issues that have been thrown upon us by the government, state government of unfunded mandates to do things that we have to do, but we can't do because we don't have the money. So I don't know. I like the presentation, I appreciate the time that you put into this and to at least make us aware that there are potentials. In the short term, I don't know where we could go in terms of any kind of authority. It's, I need time to think about this.
Yeah, I would agree. And I know that with the working waterfront stuff that's coming, as well as what the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission is doing to improve some of these wharves in our county as well as surrounding counties, I think they've got 11 that they're working on right now. I think some of the access will improve. Unfortunately, we're not adding any boat launches, but at the same time, this is a, this is really good. I would be all about it if we were getting a million to a million and a half a year in this, in the revenue that we could actually fund this, because what money we do have, if we were to try to purchase a property that's in here, all the money's gone. And then we, we sit and wait. I wish, I wish, yeah, and I wish that, you know, we were in a better spot financially and infrastructurally, but currently, we are not. And I think our extra dollars need to go to the infrastructure, at which point this will start to rev up and we can bring this back and do something with it.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, I think about, and as you, Mr. Grisco, we've been on this board for 14 years, and we've all agreed that, you know, we want to do the best for the county, but right now, the burden is on county residents to do what we can do because that's all we have. We have, obviously, we are very fortunate to have adequate retail that has helped a lot, Fox and L Run, you know, that's doing very well, and there's a lot of potential there. We're not sure what Mr. Kabicki's planning, although we do know that he has plans to do some development along there. That has helped us a lot. And of course, had we not had the reservoir, we would not have the water to supply to these facilities. So we do have water and sewer, but again, we have aging infrastructure in a lot of places, which is why we have so many holes and places that break, like Short Lane, two week and a half ago, that we had to hire Zandler to fix, and that was like a flood. And they had to come, they were there Friday night, because I live right there, they were there Friday night, and then on Monday trying to replace it. So, yeah, we've had, we have issues with infrastructure. So I'm just blabbing, but, and I know, but I...
If I can ask the board, as y'all are thinking about and digesting this and talking to your constituents and things, a couple of things to also think about. One is that we're in a fix, meaning a problem, that we don't have enough real estate tax and other tax sources to do, to keep up with our infrastructure, to do the things that would make us a better community, to have, you know, more things for our people to do that, you know, we don't have it. Doing nothing will not get us there. Mr. Thomas met with me today, and he's got some information that he's worked on that he's going to present to Maria and to me, and we're going to present it to you all. But it's basically showing that, from my understanding, and I'm a little bit preliminary, but we are relying, we have relied more and more on our sales tax and our other sources and not enough, like our percentage of what is actually being done, our real estate has gone down in how we're funding things. So if that trend continues, we are really wanting the sales tax and other sources to help fund. Again, if we don't do anything, then I'm afraid we are going to end up with that issue of the, you know, oh, we're going to grow houses because that's the only way we can make money, and that's not what most of the community wants. The other thing that I'll throw out, and I hesitate to because I know it's a very volatile issue, or a very controversial issue, and that's boat tax, but I'm going to talk about boat fee, not boat tax. So years ago, going to the General Assembly, I remember going and asking for something, and Harvey Morgan saying to me, "I got, you know, got the pie, where's that money going to come from? Everybody comes in this office and wants something. When you come, you got to figure out, because I, you know, who am I going to take it from?" Puts the problem back on the constituent who wants something. And so I learned that lesson a long time ago. So if we look at, we have, we don't have money laying around. We don't have enough extra tourism money to do some of these things. If, and I remember Louis Lawrence brought up a similar kind of thing, doing the special tax for waterfront people to help with dredging, and that didn't go anywhere, but it's the same kind of idea of creating a new source. We've had, many constituents have complained about not having a boat tax. And my research that you all asked me to do and come back for the next budget, what the other, several of the other localities have done is a boat fee, not a boat tax. It's a much more reasonable amount. We're the only one, pretty much in the whole area, not charging anything now. You know, they either had it, they took, they put it back on years ago because they were listening to constituents saying, "I'm having to pay for that 19, you know, 95 piece of junk hunk, and somebody else is driving a yacht and not paying for it. Why do I have to pay for my car?" And it's a very hard question to answer, and we don't have economic proof of what's coming in. They're just, it doesn't exist. And as I went to the PDC and said, "Does somebody want to jump in and let's do a study and we'll prove it?", nobody wants to touch it because it's hard and they're probably going to find out it doesn't do what people would hope it would. So my thought was, if the board wanted to create a new source that could help do something, like, we can get state money to help acquire land for a new boat landing that we need. There is state acquisition money, but it's not 100%. And then you got to develop, so that helps you get the land, but you've got to put the boat landing in. If we started a boat tax and you put a reserve on it that that money needed to go towards boating facilities or waterfront or whatever reserve that you wanted to, then maybe people wouldn't be as opposed to paying it because they know they're getting, it's kind of like your saltwater fishing license, you feel like you're getting something back when the grants go to help with fishing and all. It would not cut into existing resources that you don't have the ability to cut a piece of the pie off, but I do know that it would not be popular in many ways. I just wanted to throw it out as one of the things for you all to think about for the future.
So here, this has been a very good presentation, and I think there's a lot for us to digest. You've heard a lot of the comments from the board about what we would, we would like to do, but we can't. I'm wondering if, in the ensuing months, think about baby steps that we can take, that might be one thing, things that we could do that may not take a lot of money or may take no money at all that could help us in this process. I don't know whether the EDA would be amenable to some things like that, but I think now is the time for us to sit back, reflect upon what you've given us, much of what we've already heard in some respects, and think about what can we do in the near term that might help us. Obviously, near term, a big issue, of course, is our infrastructure, utilities and what are people talking about all the, as a matter of fact, the last year, I think I've heard more talk about utilities than we have in the previous 12 years. And it's obvious that it's something that we are, we are trying to do and want to do. And so I would say, thank you very much for a great presentation, a lot of information, and I think that we should keep it on the table for open discussion. If things come through that could help us with grants or whatever, it would be great. We do have a 250th that could open the eyes of a lot of people as to what Gloucester's all about and might help in that whole process.
The irony of the whole thing is, tonight, I've had to walk back out to my truck two times because I've forgotten things. On the first trip out, there's a guy walking around, had a little tag that I didn't recognize on his... On the first trip out, there's a guy walking around, had a little tag that I didn't recognize on his jacket. He worked, he's from Rocky Mount, Virginia. He's visiting Gloucester, he's staying in Gloucester, and he's gone over to Williamsburg and to Yorktown. But he's staying in Gloucester because he works with somebody that's from Gloucester. So the word of mouth is out there. I would like to figure out a way that, as Dr. Orth just said, do some kind of baby steps to see what can be done. What's the way that we could possibly start something? If, if the potential Tourism Development Authority would be part of the EDA, or if it would stand on its own, talk to the EDA and see what kind of interest is there, and then come back and see what's there. But, you know, like Spinn said, York County has more hotels than Williamsburg and Jame City County. They collect a tremendous amount of lodging tax that we don't collect.
Right.
So, all that being said, we need to remember who we are, where we are. But, uh, there may be opportunities to explore.
I agree with Mr. Hudson. I'd also like to, just, just, I want to hear from our constituents.
Mm-hmm.
I want to hear what they have to say. You know, they, you showed us, we see the presentation. Unless somebody's watching it, and it gets out there on, what is it, four-one-one or whatever that? Everybody, the citizens are not really, everyone's not really knowing what's going on. So how can we get this out to the community? How can we get this to the citizens so they can see, so they can see the vision, or hear the vision, whatever? How can we do that?
Well, I think, um-
It, it's out there, and, and the reason I'm saying what I'm saying tonight, like a broken record-
You know it's out there?
Oh, yeah, the reason I'm saying what I'm saying tonight is because my constituents are telling me, "Fix our water."
Oh, well, we know that.
Fix our, but, but that's-
True, that is true.
Right, but, but the thing is-
I'm a hundred percent about that.
But, but the thing is then, every time we do one of these, while, at, at some point, it's ended up costing us more money. And, and right now, tonight, we, we put forward stuff to borrow three million dollars for utilities, and we've raised the rates. Um, to go back to the, the dredging discussion that, that Ms. Steele brought up, we are looking, the Middle Peninsula is looking, because Mr. Lawrence is now over the, uh, PAA and, and possibly a dredge program that we can get set up. What we're looking at possibly doing is, when you dredge, and I think, um, our former assessor figured this out, the percentage of increased revenue or increased value to your home per foot of mean low water, about fourteen percent. So what Mr. Lawrence is looking at, and the reason this discussion hasn't gone on any further yet, is there is potential, we start a municipal dredge program. If we can do that, then the look is to see if there is a way to lasso, when we dredge a creek, that increased funding to go back to the dredging program to continually dredge these creeks and rivers where there's no more money from the, the federal government to dredge, to keep that dredging program going. Because ten million dollars isn't going to dredge all the creeks on the Middle Peninsula and, and the eastern shore. Um, because it's a, it's a, it's a joint thing. So there's, there's a lot of things moving that, that I, I don't bring up because they're, they're still way down the road, and there's, there's some opportunity there. Um, the other big thing that's helped us, and, um, the Middle Peninsula, and I, I mentioned this a couple meetings ago, under the last administration, we got an Economic Development District, an EDD, which we had never had for the Middle Peninsula. So some of these tourism things that happened, hadn't been happening on the Middle Peninsula, because I think, if you look at that map, we're not the only one on the Middle, I don't think there's a single one on the Middle Peninsula. So there's a new EDD that's been assigned to us that we got notification of, um, back at the end of twenty-four, it never got to us till early twenty-five. So there are some other opportunities coming, and there'll be some other monies there that we can go after as the Middle Peninsula region to help with some of this. I, I, we can't, we can't get away from this, but we just can't, we can't implement this today with, with where we're at.
Yeah, Mr. Crisco, you may have misunderstood me. I'm not saying that we ought to implement this. I'm saying, I'd just like to hear from my constituents, what they are saying. And I don't want anybody to go away thinking that I'm against utilities and getting our utilities fixed that started way before I got on this board, that got ignored. So, I mean, I'm totally, I want that done, I want that fixed. I want us to do it, and I'll do all we can to help us get that done. But we can still look at other things also and hear from our constituents. Because there are some out here that, you know, everybody, "I didn't know, you know, the, the dire straits that our facilities are really in." They don't know. I mean, this is something that's been going on for a long time.
No, you're, you're, you're right, but I'm just saying that's what I've been hearing already from, from my, from my, the folks that I've talked to, that's what I'm hearing.
And I'm all for fixing all, you know.
Like I said, we've heard more about utilities in the last year than the last previous twelve years, and, uh, we know-
I haven't heard, I mean, I'm just starting to hear all this about utilities.
But we have done-
Since we got a new, uh, director.
Yeah.
A new director is when we started hearing how bad facilities really were. I mean, and, and we know, y'all know this is the truth. It is the truth.
Yeah. Anyway, sticking to the issue at hand, thank you very much, we appreciate it, and there's a lot of good ideas, and, you know, keep the little finger caps on and looking at how we can help, yeah. I said, I, I wish we had more waterfront, I mean, we have a lot of waterfront. Unfortunately, it's not accessible to everyone, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on, Mr. Wilmot's not here, so. Is anybody doing Mr. Wilmot's presentation, or we just going to wait, or? Let's just hope, let's just, yeah, let's just-
Is there a timeline?
A timeline, or?
I don't know that, does he have a timeline? I mean, this is, when we talked about in the agenda setting, this is the same kind of agreement that has come before. You can choose to participate. If you don't elect to participate, you won't get included. And this is the family that was, that were waiting on for all the settlement, so it's a big one. My recommendation would be for the board to say, "Yes, we want to participate."
We have a resolution, I'll page one seventy.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Steele?
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
I'll vote, but I have a comment. You know, it seems to me, every time there's an opioid settlement, they never go after the doctors.
Doctors who prescribe this medication, they go after the pharmacies that do this. And so now the pharmacies are being punished for this, as opposed to the doctors, which is a huge robbery, lobby for sure, and the pharmaceutical companies as well. But I'll vote yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion carries.
Okay, all right, moving on. Uh, board appointments, here we are, we go. Okay, we got the Board of Equalization, that's vacant, still don't have anyone, any name, the Board of Equalization. Okay, we have the Community Policy Management Team, we have Social Service Board.
For Corky Hall, for Community Policy.
Okay, moves in second, in second.
Second for the board.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, the Historical Committee, we have one reappointment, and that would be Ms. Marshall.
I'll make that a motion, sir.
Okay. All right, move for second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we have the Wetlands Board, and we, that's Mr. Ware District, Mr. Nikosia. We have Mr. William Pickings.
Second.
Move second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I think that's all we, we have, right there. So moving on, okay, he's just happy to be wherever he is. Boarding Commission Reports. Supervisor Discussion.
I have one.
Yes.
Um, as we're, I know we're getting close to building the calendar for next year. I was wondering if the board would be amenable to us scheduling like a quarterly town hall meeting next year? Um, and we can determine those dates later, but I think we should, I mean, we had, we had a lot of, a lot of people enjoyed what we did. Um, this year was a little, a little bit longer, a little bit different, more than just a budget. Maybe do something a little more, with a little more frequency, so these folks don't come out here and feel like they're talking to a blank wall. If we can do that more regularly, I think that'd be helpful.
I think it's a good idea to do that, right? But also think that we need to regulate the time.
No, no.
Because the last time, the last time, we had like thirty-five, forty, I'm not talking about us, I'm talking about the people that are, that are coming to us and asking us questions. And our questions is, you know, is a long time to me, for one person.
I, I, I talked to Ms. Cronin about this-
Yes.
Back in the early part of the year. And the only reason we didn't have one this fall?
Why? I don't know.
Because it was an election year. And I didn't think it was right, no, I didn't think it was right for incumbents to be able to come in that were running for reelection to have the opportunity to speak, you know, at extra times. So I think if, even if we do this on a quarterly basis, election years, maybe we do it in the winter.
We do it twice.
We do it before and after, but not right, running up to the election.
I'm agreeing.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it's a great idea, and, you know, the format we had last month, last time was good. I still li, I still like a, a format where we don't have people in front of us and we're in front of them. You know, when, um, yeah, anyway, we could talk about it later.
Okay, good.
Okay. So you're done, Dr. Orth? Okay, all right, we do have a closed meeting, and, Mr. Crisco, if you'll read us into a closed meeting.
All right, let me make sure I'm at the right spot. Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss a particular subject in closed meeting during the course of its meeting of August fifth, twenty-twenty-five, and whereas the nature of the subject is personnel matters, more specifically the assignments and duties of the county administrator and deputy county administrators, such discussion in closed meetings expressly permitted by Virginia Code Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven ele- thirty-seven ele, thirty-seven eleven A-one. Now therefore be it resolved, the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby convene in closed meeting for the purposes of hearing expressed pursuant to the legal authority here, and recite it.
So, recite.
All in favor?
Nope.
Nope, nope, roll call.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
We're in a closed session.